Oh, um, how're you doing? You here? That's good. I got some stuff to do. Let's sit here, dude. Now, if you can read all this before six thirty, that'd be great.
Oh, well.
Can you read all this?
Well, uh, I can't, I can't see, I can't see.
That's good. That's everything that, uh, that's everything I've ever, uh, first one's just the packet, that's the cast, and then the other two are the, uh, the, the. I hadn't seen much opposition about it, just a few posts on Nextdoor, stuff like that.
I've not even got, I've not gotten a single call.
I haven't seen, yeah, no calls yet.
I wouldn't expect any of that, the whole area is pretty much R forty already. Um, I assume that screen's still not functional?
No, it's, so we've actually, I got a message today that TCS, our IT.
Recording in progress.
They're coming out tomorrow, I'm sorry, Tuesday at ten o'clock in the morning to fix it. And I was like, well, we have a meeting tonight, and they're like, well, the soonest we can get there is Tuesday.
I'll just read off the.
That's fine. Yeah, we'll, we'll have the, the TV behind you and then, I guess, just read off the, the flip one.
I could hold up a mirror and like read backwards, yeah, I could do that, yeah.
Yeah, I figured that. Get the exit out of that, that's probably doing like a sprint, there you go, get out of there.
I didn't get the hat memo.
Didn't get the hat memo?
Uh-uh.
Yeah, Chuck's gonna be wearing his today.
I'm sure, yeah. Now Chuck comes in, a polo or a t-shirt, then all, really. Then we'll see something, come on in.
Well, we finally got everything squared away for the legal ads, so we'll start.
I saw that, uh.
With those on, that's good. I, I mailed everything to Robin Tuesday, Monday or Tuesday.
And then the, uh, you'll be putting it in the news and record or?
Put it in the news and record, uh, gosh, once a month for twelve months, is that right?
That's what I, I remember, yeah.
Yeah, once a month for twelve months. First it was once a week for twelve months.
That's a lot.
And then we backed it up and said, once a month for twelve months. So, we'll put it in there and, and Robin said that once she gets the document signed by the, the manager and herself, then, uh, she'll set up training and we'll go on and do like some test ones and.
It's so easy.
I figured it was very, just click and drop and.
If I can figure it out, you can figure it out.
She said the IT people are also gonna go ahead, so there's no confusion of like, what's a Guilford County meeting versus what's a Stokesville meeting?
They just have to program it, add in an extra line.
Add that line, always says Stokesville.
Yep.
That's the plan.
If you pay me, I'll put the notice.
There you go.
I, it is for me, I'm a government employee, we don't make any money.
We, uh, it's, I mean, it's significantly cheaper, but you know, Robin Cheven, you know, mentioned, it's not just about the price, it's, it's a whole lot easier to read something online nowadays in the paper.
And most people will go to a website to see it, they won't look in the notices of the paper.
That's right.
It, it's a throwback to the old days when the newspaper lobby was really strong. Honestly, I'm surprised in North Carolina, they don't require us to put on billboard every month because of how strong the billboard lobby is.
That's a good point, that's a good point. I know the county has a lot more requirements than we do. The municipality's like, I think you all have to put every meeting in the paper, we don't have to do that, or before Guilford County got the, the permission to put it on the website.
At that point, yeah, and then they got, somebody got grumpy and then took it to their state, state legislature and got that changed, so.
Oh, good.
That's where special legislation comes from. That's usually what happens, somebody gets upset in some small community, gets in the ear of a state representative or sticks it out there, and that just takes off.
Makes sense. You don't leave that unopened.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, usually what I'll do is, um, yeah, I'll do it like that, that way if anything were to go wrong, it'll pop up over there, if you click Stream Help.
Uh, yeah, right there.
It'll say important. So I just keep an eye on that.
And, actually, what I may do is during the presentation, I may just take the camera and we'll put it on the TV. And then that way, everybody at home can see the PowerPoint on the television screen.
Would it not, isn't there a way to, uh, share, share the screen?
Not on YouTube, but on Zoom it is.
That's right, you guys use YouTube, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So YouTube is just cameras, it'll, it'll hook up to the cameras, but it won't actually show the.
Yeah, and Graham, and Graham, we used Zoom.
Zoom, for, for just live streaming, yeah.
Yeah, it was so easy.
Yeah, I mean, it is, Zoom's great, Zoom is built into this tablet.
And you could run it as a webinar, so you could disable question and answer, so that people wouldn't put, you know, nasty comments on, on the tab.
That's a good point. Well, let's see, so, well, we, uh.
Did you get a confirmation, how many would be here tonight?
Yeah, where's that little sticky note inside the, the, Mason had a little sticky note in there, right there.
Six, six votes.
Six out of nine, not bad.
Two out of three ain't bad, right? Isn't that what Meatloaf says? You're, you're probably too young to know what that is, but.
He's a singer, I know he is.
He was, yeah.
He was.
He was a singer.
Really good one, too.
I guess we'll, uh, so we'll still go ahead and call, I was, I was talking to Chuck about it, and Chuck was like, well, I'd prefer to have the training as a part of the meeting, I said, okay, that's fine. So what we'll do is we'll call the meeting to order and we'll get, you know, everybody up there, and then only two administrative things, adopt the agenda, adopt the minutes, and then go straight into the training. So just knock us to, it'd just be two.
So you do that stuff, then swear in after training, and then go into the rezoning?
Yep.
Or seat the members, then go into the rezoning.
That's right, that's right, that's right. Yeah, we'll change them and we'll get up there, so let's see, we've got, who are the permanent members, you and, and Mr. Green, are you, you're an alternate, alternate, but we'll, we'll get you up there, so. If, uh, I thought Mr., did you say that Mr. Louis was coming or not? Can't remember.
Yes.
He's coming.
So he will start as chair until, have, have, they've already elected officers, though, haven't they?
Yeah, so, yeah, we elected officers back in January.
So the vice chair is now Louis?
Yeah, that's right.
And Curtis is the chair?
Uh, Chris Sumner.
Chris is the chair.
Yeah, Chris Sumner. Curtis called earlier, is he coming? Priscilla's up to him.
Okay.
That's all that, alright, cool.
So actually, Chris could just take the chair spot, since he's already been elected, they don't have to swap or anything.
That's right.
Cause he's a sworn member of it.
That's right, that's right.
Yeah.
That's right.
There's all these little rules that we have to follow.
Corps.
I blame Robert.
Robert's rules.
Robert's rules, have you ever read the whole thing?
No, there's a copy of it in the office, though.
There's also a copy that I include with their stuff, like.
Probably lots, a hundred fifty, how are you doing?
It reads like stereo instructions from Ikea, like trying to figure out what's going on there.
Are you gonna be your packet? The PowerPoint and then the supplemental docs that he's attached, right? And so we'll get your name and your address today.
I would keep the PowerPoint slides and supplemental docs as a tool for.
Yeah, 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 just keep on referring to it.
But.
That's right. We'll go ahead and get you up here. I can't remember where everybody normally sits.
Well, that's about right for Curtis. Louis will probably sit where Derek's tag is. And Chris will sit where Mike is, and then the other two can just sit where they wanna sit.
We'll put T and Mr. Jones' slide here. He's not using it tonight. Mr. Southern, where do you usually sit? Using it right there here. I start having these things every month.
No, that's alright. Just, just as business.
That's right.
Cause if you start having them every month, then your growth's gonna get out of control, that's a bad sign, usually.
Yeah, yeah, come on up here, you're good, yeah, yeah, you're good, oh, you're fine, you're fine, yeah, no, you're good, come on up here. Yeah, that's fine, well, we'll go ahead, we'll call it to order, and then we'll, we'll just do two little business items and then we'll, we'll call it to order. Um, since, uh, Stephen and Chris aren't here, I guess, uh, we'll have to nominate a chair for now.
Right, the majority will have to vote for who will serve as acting chair until the.
So that's gonna be, uh, just, we'll just make an nomination and then. Yeah, actually. Do I call for that?
You, you would do.
Yeah, I'll call for the nomination.
Or Chuck could, either, either one of them.
Either one, but.
We thought you'd come in jeans and a t-shirt, but, uh, wrong again.
Morning, Jeff.
Uh, old school, I guess.
You probably sleep in a suit. Now where you ready to go?
I guess I'm old school, I guess, right?
Alrighty.
I'm gonna let you give the training tonight, I did all the hard work, just read this.
Yes. We're going to enter the agenda during this, or?
So what we'll do is, um, I've got a memo here, so whoever you all decide, so what, what I would like to do is, under Agenda Item Four, uh, before we get into the, uh, into the public hearing, after this training session is over, uh, Mrs. Mailer will have met her requirement for training, and so if we could add Agenda Item Four A, I can go ahead and give her her oath, get her sworn in, and then she could be a, an alternate member, that can be active on the, on the, on the board.
We're gonna add that one in under four.
Yep, yep, and then just do Four A.
Okay.
Four A, and, um, and we'll do that, and then if we don't get, uh, if Mr. Louis or Mr. Sumner, I know Mr. Sumner's not coming, if Mr. Louis doesn't show up, then, uh, Mrs. Mailer can pop up here for her first meeting and make the fifth person, so we can put you right in the middle. Now, we'll, uh, whoever decides to, to act as chair will just have them slide over into this spot, it really doesn't matter, but just for procedure.
So we'll need to.
Yeah, so what I'll do is, I'll, yeah, I'll call, so I'll call the meeting to order, and then I'll ask for a nomination, and then somebody here will just nominate somebody to be acting chair for, just for now, uh, for the meeting, and then, uh.
You've done it before.
Yeah, yeah, we've done it before, I think you were at.
You all do it?
Yeah, I don't wanna be.
You don't, you don't wanna be? Whoever wants to do it, it's fine, I'll take your pick, and so, uh.
Well, he may be here by the time the meeting starts.
That's good, yeah, that's true.
He did, yeah, Catherine Garner must have sniped.
But actually, the meeting will start here at six thirty, so we'll, we'll start it now.
That's okay, that's fine. We've, we've got, we'll get it started.
Louis, um, no, Louis, Louis is not act, not chair anymore, is he?
No, uh, Chris Sumner, he's not gonna be here today, um, he did reach out to Mason earlier in the week, said he wasn't gonna be able to make it.
Louis not gonna be here?
He, he's supposed to be, he may just be running behind, but, um, and he may just think it's at seven, cause normally they are at seven, so, but we just popped this one a little bit earlier, so. Alrighty, well, I'll, uh.
Ron, since you've done it, will you do it?
Go ahead and call it to order and then just ask for a nomination for acting chair.
Okay.
Alright, it is six thirty-two PM on Thursday, May the twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, we're here for the, uh, regular planning board meeting of the Town of Stokesville Planning Board, and, uh, as a town clerk, I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order, and I'll ask the present members to, uh, to nominate one of your, one of your own to act as chairman for the meeting tonight. So do I have a nomination? Not everybody at once.
I'll nominate Ron Southern to act as chair.
Alright, we have a nomination for Mr. Southern to act as chair, all those in favor, say aye.
Do we need a second?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, seconds, I'm sorry, I was skipping, getting ahead of myself here, alright, you got a second?
Second.
Alright, second for Mr. Green. Any other nomination? Alright, then we'll move it to, to, uh, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, anyone opposed? Abstaining is an aye, so we are four zero. So, Mr. Southern, if you would, we'll, we'll have you act as chair tonight, and you can, you can sit there, that's no problem, and so we'll just, um, from that point.
Is this just for the here or the meeting tonight?
Just for the meeting tonight, for, for the meeting tonight, and, and, uh, I guess even if Mr. Louis shows up.
If he shows up, then I, I believe he would automatically resume chair.
Resume chair, okay, so just until Mr. Louis shows up, if he doesn't show up, then, then just through the end of tonight. So with that, uh, we'll, we can move on to, uh, to, uh, number two, review and adopt the agenda. And, uh, like I say, I do have one request for you before you adopt it, uh, and, and that is to add Agenda Item Number Four A, and that being in the swearing in of a new alternate member of the Town of Stokesville Planning Board.
Mr. Wagner, I think I need to do the pledge.
Oh, you're right, don't forget that, actually, let's get back, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm not used to running, I'm used to taking a minute.
You're doing fine.
Okay, let's.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. So was there a motion to amend the agenda to include that item? Yeah, so if, if one of you would be willing to make that motion, that would be great, that would just be my, my.
I'll make a motion that we, um, amend the agenda under number four.
A.
To add a letter A.
Okay.
For this, uh, swearing in of new members.
Sounds great.
Second.
We have a second, alright, second for Mr. Southern, alright, if you wanna just call a question. Ask everybody.
Everyone in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Sounds good. Alright. And then just go ahead and you can read item number four.
Three.
Three items. Approved the minutes.
Oh, good. Listen to me.
This is your first meeting, right?
My first meeting, I'm just so eager.
Mr. Southern, you can just start with number three, uh, read the item, and then, uh, you'll call for a vote.
Oh, um.
If there's a discussion.
Alright, we need to adopt, adopt the agen, wait a minute, approve the minutes from January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four. Will I hear a motion? To adopt the agen, to adopt the minutes, I'll get it right in a minute.
I'll move that we adopt the, uh, minutes from the January twenty-fifth meeting as written.
Alright, second.
Here a second?
I'll second, here he is.
Oh, hey.
Here he is.
Hey, hey, how're you doing?
Okay. All, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Should the right chairman in there?
There you go. So if you just wanna make a note of what time we ship. Yeah, there you go.
Gentlemen.
And Mr. Louis, just to catch you up, uh, we've done one, two, and three, there was an amendment to the agenda to add Item Four A to swear in a new alternate planning board member.
Okay.
And Mr. Southern was taking control of the meeting in your absence.
So let me get this straight, you've started the official planning board meeting?
Correct.
But that doesn't start until seven?
Six thirty, it has a special time.
Oh, okay.
Just because the training does go around, it will, next meeting, we won't have a training, it'll start at seven like always. The only difference was this time, it was a, it was a special time for the training, so.
Hmm, is that a legal thing, because don't we have our regularly appointed time to start the meetings at seven?
Yes, but the, the notice of this meeting advertised as to be six thirty.
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, yep, and it was noticed in the paper ten days ago, and it was noticed.
And by mail also, uh, I think fourteen days ago.
Now I had six thirty on.
Well, that's good, because I didn't notice.
It's okay, it's okay. It's no problem.
The public hearing, we're, we're.
It's still at seven.
Public hearing will be after seven because of the training session that's getting married to here.
Okay. Alright, so.
So we're on number four.
Where are we at this point?
We are, we are now down to the non-public hearing items.
Alright.
Where we're at now.
Yeah, item number four. If you're, so the arrangement was, Mr. Southern, uh, was acting chairman and you're absent, but now that you're here, you're.
Okay, so we need then to start, non-public hearing items, six thirty PM, presentation by Guilford County Planning.
Correct.
For the purpose of planning board training.
Yeah.
Well, good, let's get on with it. Sorry to delay everything.
No, you're, you're perfectly fine, it's good to understand the process, so, um, I'm gonna give a, uh, hopefully somewhat brief training. Uh, there's gonna be a lot of information covered in a little bit amount of time. Um, I, I'd like to leave a little bit of time for some questions, if you have it, you're welcome to ask as we go. Also, if something comes up and you do have a question, I'll do my best to answer, if not, hopefully Chuck can back me up on that. Um, but, uh, this is just to give you an introduction to the planning board process and your role as, uh, planning board members. Uh, and so I'm gonna look at it from both a local and a state perspective, and just try to give you some framework on that. So, topics of discussion tonight, the types of decisions that you will be making, local board makeup in general, procedures, conflicts of interest, ex parte communication, we'll explain all these terms, and also recusals. The planning board's role for various case types in Stokesdale, which would be rezonings, text amendments, major subdivisions, land use plan modifications, major site plans, and special use permits, and then conventional versus conditional rezoning, uh, as well as avoiding spot zoning, uh, discussing future land use, and then deliberations, recommendations, and voting. And so the, uh, typical local government decisions, uh, I've included a chart, and, uh, this is from the School of Government, and basically, you will see there's three categories of types of decisions that occur in local government typically. Those are administrative, quasi judicial, and legislative. Administrative are your things where there is a prescriptive standard in the ordinance, so it is black and white, and if they meet the standards of the ordinance, thou shalt grant the permit. Quasi judicial is more where the role requires subjectivity, and so anytime there's subjectivity in a decision, such as a variance or an appeal, where there's a determination of fact finding, uh, it requires an evidentiary hearing, which is somewhat synonymous with quasi judicial, and that process follows a whole different set of rules and regulations, um, and so if you've ever seen the Board of Adjustment meetings, uh, we've even had a single quasi judicial hearing here recently with a garage. Uh, and, and that's an unusual circumstance, we don't normally find that, but, um, it requires, uh, different notice, uh, it requires testimony, um, factual information, uh, cross-examination, so there's a lot more to it than what you would find with your typical administrative decision, which is almost always made by staff. There's also legislative decisions, these are your text amendments, your basic rezonings, these are typically made by the governing body, um, unless there's special legislation that states otherwise. Uh, and so, uh, we'll discuss what your role is in that legislative process, because that is the primary function of this board, is to support the legislative process. And so there are various local boards in Stokesdale, and these boards, uh, make up the land use decisions, uh, that affect this town. So you've got the planning board, which you are a part of, that's comprised of five appointed citizen members, as well as five alternative, alternate members. The Board of Adjustment, which in Stokesdale is currently staffed by the town council in absence of them, uh, appointing citizen membership. Uh, and then there's the town council itself, which is comprised of five elected members, which include the mayor. And so, um, basically, each of these boards has its own rules and procedures that it follows, and as part of those rules and procedures, they're, uh, they support what's also within the ordinance, and all that combined is what helps you make up land use decisions. Planning board procedures, so the planning board must act in accordance with procedures that are specified by the town council and which are adopted in the development ordinance. Most of these procedures that you will be prescribed are specified in Articles Three and Article Nine, and the rules of procedure, which I've included in your supplemental documents. The administrative procedures, uh, that are required for advertisement, for notice, uh, staff reports, all of that information is typically prepared by staff, including the town clerk, deputy clerk, and myself as the planner, and occasionally, the town attorney will also, uh, help provide some of that information. It's important to note that the planning board must hold the correctly noticed, if applicable, hearing or meeting type based on the type of application that's being reviewed. And the board's role in that review, so whether your role is recommending, approving, or advising. So, uh, we, we do have to follow whatever's noticed, and that's the procedure that we have to follow. So tonight, for instance, we have a legislative hearing, a rezoning case, so we have to follow the, the right legislative procedures as well as the noticing procedures that are prescribed in the development ordinance. Uh, any members who would be absent need to communicate with the chair or the secretary to the board prior to a meeting, or the absence can be considered unexcused. Uh, unexcused absences are typically covered in your rules of procedure, uh, often if you're given three, sometimes within a certain period of time, or you might be removed from the board, uh, in favor of somebody who's able to attend more. Alternates should always attend every meeting, just like regular members, because we never know what's gonna come up, so it's always important to have a fully staffed board, which helps with due process, and we wanna make sure that citizens get a fair shake with the board at all times. The fewer members you have, the harder it is to produce a good majority, so, uh, just keep that in mind. Uh, if the chair and vice chair are absent, the remaining members must vote to determine acting chair for that meeting, and that's very fortuitous, that happened tonight, so, good example of that. Um, and then if the chair or vice chair, uh, come to the meeting late, or, uh, come at a different time, then they would automatically assume that position on the board. So now we're gonna get into, um, so these things do apply to legislative boards, but they're more important, I think, for quasi judicial boards, they're, they're, they're important for all boards. Um, but I wa, I wanna discuss your role with conflicts of interest, ex parte communication, and when to recuse. So, a conflict of interest, um, so the planning board must act in good faith and avoid specific conflicts that could jeopardize or violate a citizen's right to due process of law. And in due process, we're getting into the Constitution, so we wanna be very careful to protect due process rights. North Carolina General Statute one sixty D, which covers most planning related items in this state, it's a consolidation of one fifty-three A and one sixty A, which was for county and, uh, city governments. Um, section one oh nine states that, "Members of appointed boards shall not vote on any advisory or legislative decision," which is what you do as a board, "regarding a development regulation adopted pursuant to this chapter where the outcome of the matter being considered is reasonably likely to have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact on the member." An appointed board member shall not vote on any zoning amendment if the landowner of the property is subject to a rezoning petition or the applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom that member has a close familial, business, or associational relationship. So, basically, in, in lay speak, what that means is, let's say your best friend comes up for a rezoning request, you probably should recuse yourself because it's the right thing to do, if a family member comes up with a request, recuse yourself. Uh, if you are an, uh, a board member, or, and if you are on the board of an LLC that's doing a development proposal, and that proposal's coming before this board, you need to disclose and recuse yourself. If there's any question about whether to recuse, it's always best to disclose to the public and to the board and let the board vote on whether they think you should be excused from the meeting, so, just keep that in mind.
So the one coming up tonight, I really need to excuse myself.
Okay, so, uh, when it gets to that point, um, the chairman can ask if there are any known conflicts of interest, and if, at that point, he's called to question, you can make the answer that, yes, I believe I have a conflict of interest, disclose it, and ask to be excused from the board for that item.
According to what I, whatever, what you just said here.
And, and that's perfectly acceptable, and, and what'll happen is, um, well, that's a good question for you, Chuck, so, that would leave four members, would an alternate then step up just for that item?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, we can.
To get back to five members, that way a majority is easier, we don't hit a two-two tie, cause in the case of a tie, it's going to fail. So, good, thank you, that's a great question, so we'll, we'll, we'll handle that, uh, when it gets to that meeting, um, or when it gets to that item.
I wondered about that when I was coming up here, since I'm a direct neighbor.
Your instincts are telling you right, it sounds like, so.
Since I'm a, a neighbor and I work for.
I think that's a great idea, that, that would be the business relationship, so, even though you may not personally gain anything, it's still one of those instances where it would be better to ask to be. would be better to ask to be excused.
All right.
So, with that said, 160D, 109 also states that the planning board, when acting in a quasi judicial capacity, so that's the case where you hold an evidentiary hearing, such as the garage in front of the house, and we'll get, I'm sure we'll talk about that later, but when that happens, you must then hold an evidentiary hearing to make findings of fact, using relevant and substantial evidence and testimony to make a discretionary decision. So that's where judgment comes in, not just conformance with a plan or conformance with the zoning around it, you actually have to use subjective judgment in those cases. And in the case where you're in a quasi judicial capacity, a member shall not participate in or vote on any quasi judicial matter in a manner that would violate the affected person's constitutional rights to an impartial decision maker. Impermissible violations of due process include, but are not limited to, a member having a fixed opinion prior to hearing the matter that is not susceptible to change. In other words, if you've already basically made up your mind, and you're not changing your mind, then you should not vote on that item. Having undisclosed ex parte communication, so where you have gone and visited the site, and at that time, the property owner got a hold of your ear and started talking your ear off about the proposal, and was like, yeah, I really think you should approve this, and here's why, and you're sitting there listening to it, and you don't disclose that in the public hearing, you need to, really need to disclose it, and you need to ask for a recusal or excuse.
Or an opponent of it.
Or an opponent, yes, either way. A close familial business or other associational relationship with an affected person, or a financial interest in the outcome of the matter. And when a conflict of interest is disclosed, that remember, as I've mentioned, should recuse himself or herself. If you choose not to recuse yourself, but there's still a question about your impartiality, then the board chair may call for a majority vote to excuse you from participation for that item. If any member raises an objection to a member participating, the board shall hold a vote to determine whether they should be allowed to participate. So, we've kind of partially defined these, but what are ex parte and close familial relationships? So, ex parte communication is defined as an oral or written communication not on the public record with respect to which reasonable prior notice to all parties is not given, but it shall not include requests for status reports on any matter or proceeding. And because this occurs outside of an evidentiary hearing, it is a violation of the Fourteenth Amendment's due process, and so it would not be permissible. And a close familial relationship means a spouse, parent, child, brother, sister, grandparent, or grandchild, and it can also include step, half, or in-law relationships, so it's pretty broad. You know, in all reality, if you're related, close enough where you consider them your family, then you need to recuse yourself. So, next we'll talk about your role in the decision-making process.
Before we move on, can I just make one other sort of, I guess, additional comment about what you were just covering?
Yes.
And this is mainly directed to my fellow board members. This is also to help protect us.
Yes.
From any kind of blowback or retaliatory action by either party, and anything that we're, that's up for consideration before the board. So, you know, if it's a, I'll use the example of a business partner, or employer, or employee type relationship, that person can't expect you to participate in a decision when you clearly have a conflict of interest there, and should not be, you know, any kind of grounds for any sort of retaliatory type behavior. So, just wanna remind everybody, it's here to protect us as well.
And it's not just about protection, it's also about perception to the public.
Right, true.
You don't wanna be perceived as a body that's doing back, you know, back office deals without the public being involved.
Exactly.
And that's a clear violation of due process, so it's important to protect your fellow citizens.
Right.
Because you're representing the town of Stokesdale, and you wanna make legally defensible positions, so that if there were ever a legally filed appeal, the town will have firm standing to be able to defend against that appeal. So, it's very important.
Yeah, well said.
To take that seriously. So, the planning board's role as an approving body. Municipalities and counties in the state are only allowed to make local laws relative to land use that are directed by the state of North Carolina. So, this is a Dillon's Rule state, we are not a Home Rule state. So, Chapters 160A and 160D basically cover the allowances for municipalities with regard to land use. Anything outside of that, and it's likely to get brought up in court and very likely thrown out by a judge, because there's not been any sort of enabling legislation to allow it from the state level. In most jurisdictions in North Carolina, the planning board is responsible for either legislative or quasi judicial decision-making, sometimes both. In this case, you do have, there are processes for both, but your primary role is actually as a legislative recommending body, not, in most cases, not a decision-making body, most cases. In Stokesdale, again, you're a recommending body. A somewhat unusual role for your particular planning board is that certain administrative decisions have also been assigned for final approval by the board. That would include major site plans and major subdivisions. The minor and exempt are currently approved by the county staff as part of the technical review process. The major site plans and major subdivisions are, it's kind of in the air, the ordinance actually says three different things, and so it's a little bit confusing. So, there's an old, very old provision that actually says it goes to town council, but that was in an appendix that never got updated when the ordinance got updated, so it's just kind of floating out there. The ordinance itself, in the roles of the planning board, says that you are, actually, it's in the Permits and Procedures for Subdivisions and Site Plans, says you are the approval body when it's brought to you by staff, for majors, major site plans, major subdivisions. And then if you go further, under the enforcement officer definition in the ordinance, I believe it's in Article 9, staff is the approving authority for all plans in the town. So you see why we're trying to update some things, it's a little confusing exactly what this body's role is, and it makes it difficult for us to advise a citizen on what the correct process is, 'cause we've got it saying three different things. So, hopefully we'll get some clarity on that. So, the planning board's role in major site plan or subdivision approval. It's important to note that while the planning board has administrative approval authority, at least in one portion of the ordinance, it cannot deny a subdivision or site plan if it meets the standards of the development ordinance. If it meets the ordinance, the plan shall be approved. Additionally, you cannot put any conditions on an approval for an administrative decision, because that is a quasi judicial role. This is an administrative process, it's a yes or no. The only way you can say no is if it clearly does not meet the standards of the ordinance, but you're getting on shaky ground, because if staff says it does, planning board says it doesn't, then the town's in a pickle. So, we wanna be sure to try to back each other up as staff and the planning board. Since staff is typically the technical review body, it's best to defer to their review responsibilities and simply make it whatever.
Chevron defense, huh?
Basically, it's a rubber stamp, to be honest. It's unnecessary, but it is what it is. Since staff reviews, again, since we review them for the objective ordinance standards that the town council has put in place, your role is pretty redundant and is really a formality in this process. And the authority for final decision-making on applications, as I mentioned, is set forth both in 160D and as an extension to local development ordinance, which the town council has created and approved. And so, next we'll talk about your role in plan making. So, your task with assisting in the creation and updates the town's comprehensive plan, which is the, includes the future land use plan and any associated maps. The board is also allowed to undertake other plans or studies as directed by the town council. Your role in these processes is to hold public hearings, provide feedback to the council, and give guidance to the plan preparer as needed. Final adoption of plans is still and likely always will be a function of the town council. Your role as a recommending body, so you are tasked with holding these public hearings and meetings to gather information from citizens, staff, and others regarding specific application types that are brought before you. These types, as I mentioned previously, will include rezonings, special use permits, text amendments, appeals of enforcement officer decisions, although there's some question about that, road name changes, road closings, right-of-way vacations, easement removals, right-of-way encroachments, and any watershed matters as a sign that would not go to the state. The planning board makes recommendations based on, and this is really important, based on reasonableness and consistency with adopted land use plans that would be in the best interest of the public. Now, there is discretion on your part as far as what is in the best interest of the public, but you need to find somewhere that you can point to specifically in a plan, or you need to base it on not only public input, but also your research, staff's research, the staff reports, surrounding land uses, all these things together are how you make your decisions. So, you can pull from those, but ideally, it's gonna be based on a standard in an adopted plan or in the ordinance. And you always wanna include the statement of reasonableness and consistency with your motion on any rezoning or special use permit item, anything like that. And you'll see tonight, in the staff report that I've prepared, that there is a statement prepared for you, you're welcome to change that, modify it, throw it out and come up with a new one, whatever you wanna do, but there has to be a statement, reasonableness and consistency. And I believe the case law for that goes back to the city of Charlotte, way back when, maybe in the mid-eighties, but. Next, we're gonna talk about conventional versus conditional rezoning. It was hard for me to show this in any format that I can make it make sense easily, but basically with conventional, X is going to Y, just straight and simple. But with a conditional zoning, X goes to Y, but you see the little asterix behind Y, that means that certain conditions can be added or uses removed, and typically you'll find that, they'll propose development conditions, you can propose additional development conditions if you think that it won't be consistent unless those development conditions are added on, but keep in mind, that's only with conditional rezonings. So, there are applicant advantages to both types, so you'll see both types come before this board. And there's also advantages to the town for both types, and we'll talk about some of those. So with conventional rezoning, the applicant's advantages are that they can talk with city council members prior to the meeting, there's nothing that says they can't. They can go back and say, hey, you know, I want you to approve this, and this is why, and they could have, that member could make up his mind before he ever gets to the public hearing, because it's not a quasi judicial process, it's a legislative process. And so, that happens a lot, believe it or not. There's no findings of fact required, there's no quasi judicial proceedings, no evidence has to be gathered. If somebody says, hey, I don't want this next to me because there's gonna be too many dogs barking, even though it's maybe for an industrial building, you know, if you guys thought, oh yeah, he's right, and we don't want dogs barking, then that might be the reason that you approve it, could be the reason to deny it, I don't know. But there, it's, it's an interesting process in government. Anybody can say anything, and if it's, whoever makes a stronger argument tends to win. Not always. Good rule of thumb, stick with the land use plan. You know, that's always your basis for making your decisions, so. Another applicant advantage, the conventional rezoning is relatively inexpensive to apply for. You don't need site plans for a conventional rezoning, because it allows, whatever district they're seeking allows any use in that permitted use table that is, has a P or a check mark under it for that particular zoning district. And then, as I reminded you, decisions are based on compliance with the land use plan. So, and there's disadvantages to the town with conventional rezonings. Any permitted use can be developed that's in that district. The town cannot impose conditions. Any questions about proposed future use on the property is completely irrelevant, and we will tell you that. You can't say, hey, are you planning to subdivide this? It's completely irrelevant. It's, whatever's in the RS40, anything in there, as long as they meet the development ordinance, if you give them RS40, that's what they get. The current property owner can sell the property, and the new owner can have a different plan of what's gonna be built on there, as long as it's compliant with whatever the district is, then they can do it. So that's another disadvantage for the town potentially. Again, only the ordinance standards can restrict how the development's going to look in any way. You cannot impose conditions, so just keep that in mind. Some things to remember, we've already talked about compliance with the land use plan and the statement of consistency. It's important to state why it is or is not consistent with that plan, it just gives you a little bit more teeth if you get to an appeal, it helps Chuck defend the town, that's important. Your statement of reasonableness, you give consideration to some of the following factors, it's not an all-inclusive list, but size, the physical conditions on the property, any other attributes that might impact the property through a land use change, any benefits or detriments of the request to the surrounding community, and I do mean any, you are legally permitted to consider anything, really. The relationship between current permissible development and future development on surrounding properties, why the request is in the public interest, that's an important one. And then any changed conditions, not conditions to the plan, but conditions in the area that may warrant this zoning map amendment. Let's say a big highway has been built, and so everything was residential, but now it's trending towards industrial, because there's a giant highway, nobody wants to live along a highway, you know, I'm just using that as an example, but that's the kind of change that you might find, that would be a change in conditions of the surrounding area. Or maybe a previous applicant was successful in getting a commercial development right behind this, and so nobody wants to live there anymore, 'cause it's got a lot of traffic, a lot of light, noise, other things like that, so maybe they wanna rezone to commercial, because it's more compatible with that surrounding commercial. So these are all things to keep in mind. Just a quick word on spot zoning, we don't see this very often, especially with large lot zoning like Stokesdale has, it's more rural community feel, but it can happen. It's basically where a small parcel of land is rezoned differently than the surrounding area, and when I say surrounding area, I mean like, you know, maybe within like a mile or mile and a half radius, not just necessarily the immediate area. So if literally everything for about, you know, half a mile to a mile is zone agricultural, and all of a sudden somebody wants to put commercial right in the middle, that is spot zoning, and that is not a good idea. So, you wanna consider the size of the track, compatibility of the zoning with the adopted plans, which we've said several times now, benefits or detriments of the rezoning for the applicant, the surrounding property owners, and the community, these are all important factors, and the relationship of the uses that would be allowed under the proposed zoning, and the uses currently allowed on those adjacent tracks, these are all things to consider. Now, conditional zoning's a little bit different, so it is still a legislative rezoning process. However, it's going to its own district, it's going to a conditional zoning district that only applies to that piece of property, doesn't apply anywhere else. You could see conditional zonings all over town, and every single one of them is its own different district, because none of them have the same conditions, so that's important to keep in mind. And the conditions can be imposed by the council, but they must be agreed to by the applicant in writing prior to final action, so if they don't agree, then they don't get the zoning. Or, the council would have to agree to approve it without that condition. So typically, the council will wanna ask the question, are you okay with these conditions? Or, so, two scenarios. One, applicant proposes the conditions, council goes along with them, that's in writing. So if everybody agrees, great, move forward. The other scenario is the council adds conditions or amends conditions. In that case, then it needs to be in writing to the applicant, the applicant needs to sign off that they agree to those conditions as amended or as imposed, in addition to what they submitted originally, so. So, that's just something to keep in mind.
There's one thing you can't do, however, and that is you can't say, "I will approve this if you agree to this."
That's called contract zoning, and we cannot do that. That is illegal.
So, a little bit of a dance you have to do with the question is you can't say, "I'll approve it if you do this," but you can say, "Would you be willing to do this?"
Would you be willing to, and also, would this condition make the plan more compliant with an adopted land use plan, or would it make it more consistent with the surrounding land uses? That's what they're trying to ultimately get to by imposing conditions. It's not just to, you know, be a but and just give them 500 different conditions on their property because you don't like them. It's because you're trying to make it digestible by the surrounding community, whereas if it was just a conventional rezoning, maybe it doesn't quite fit in. But with these conditions, yeah, I think we can make it work. So, maybe a bigger buffer, or maybe your hours of operation end at 10 o'clock at night, or you're not open on Sundays, you know? Things like that, those are all permissible conditions. But, and so, again, they're limited to those that address conformance of the development and use of the site to local government ordinances or impacts that could reasonably be expected by the use. One that you'll often find is the need for maybe a left turn lane or something like that. DOT can specify those as part of the review process under state law, but the local town could say, "Well, DOT's traffic numbers may not be up to date, so it's not going to warrant that additional infrastructure, but we know, just by living in this community, that this traffic is terrible, and if we don't put in that left turn lane, we're going to have accidents. We're going to have backups for three miles." That is the type of thought process where conditions can be imposed. So, just keep those things in mind. Also, very important, zoning runs with the land, not with the owner or applicant. So, if John Q. Public rezones with conditional zoning for a shopping center, and then Jeannie comes in and she says, "Well, I bought this property, but I don't want to do a shopping center. I want to do a daycare." Well, if the rezoning's only for a shopping center, then she's going to have to go back through the rezoning process to amend the conditional zoning, or she's going to have to go to a different prescriptive zoning district to be able to do the daycare. So, just keep that in mind. And we are obligated to track in perpetuity, forever, that conditional zoning and all of those associated conditions, because it runs with the land. It's basically, it's like an ordinance, so we have to keep good records. So, we've kind of talked about all this. Oh, here's one other thing. State law does allow for minor modifications to approved conditional zoning sketch plans, if applicable, or certain standards at the staff level. So, like, for instance, if they wanted to, I don't know, let's say they had a, maybe they had a 40-foot buffer and needed to reduce it to like a 35-foot buffer, because they've got some sort of like environmental encumbrance or something that makes it impossible, or they've got to put a pond in a certain location, we can work with them on those to a certain extent. Typically, those need to be prescriptive, though, in the ordinance. So, like, I'm not sure Stokesdale's ordinance offers prescriptive changes, but they might say you can reduce the setback by 10%, or you can decrease the density by up to, you know, 10% or something like that. Something reasonable and objective that staff can follow, because we are not allowed to make subjective determinations on amendments to a zoning. So, I don't see those very often. Typically, what will happen is they'll have to come back and amend their zoning if there's something that's big enough that it won't work. There are permissible conditions, as I discussed. So, use conditions restricting permitted uses, conditions related to site plans, such as lighting, parking setbacks, and buffers, requirements for a percentage of affordable housing units in conjunction with an adopted plan. So, if Stokesdale had an adopted affordable housing plan that said, "Hey, every development needs to provide 10% of its units as Section Eight housing," let's say they had that plan, it's probably not, but if they had that plan, if they had that plan, then at that point, that would become a permissible condition to that development. Road improvements, we already talked about, housing type mixes. So, you could say, "Well, you're coming in for 200 apartments. Well, we're not comfortable with that, but we'll give you 50 apartments, 50 townhomes, and 100 single-family homes. If you agree to that, then I think we're good." You know, that's the kind of give and take that you'll typically find, similar to what Summerfield tried to do with Mr. Couch's development, how they've tried to go back and forth, even though they haven't met the middle yet. But that's basically the same process that they've been going through. Building height, hours of operation, sign size, type of location, et cetera. There are impermissible conditions, too. This is important. So, conditions that prohibit affordable housing. You cannot prohibit affordable housing. That is a legal right, and you cannot take it away. Conditions based on race, religion, ethnicity, or other discriminatory characteristics that are protected under federal or state law, you cannot create. If there's no logical land use rationale, you can't require them to paint their house pink just because you like the color pink. There has to be a land use rationale for a condition. Any condition tied to a specific person, business, or group. And this is because, remember, those conditions are going to run with the land, not with the landowner. Also, be careful of running afoul of protections given to certain uses under Article Nine of Chapter 160D. Churches, beehives, public buildings, adult uses, billboards, all have special protections under the law. Shouldn't seem like in some cases, but they do. So, you've got to be really careful with that. And that's where you rely on staff or your town attorney to give you guidance as far as what you can and can't do. And then, next, we'll talk about the future land use plan and map as a tool for zoning. So, the future land use plan and map, they guide how the town could or should develop in the town's vision. These are typically amended every 10, maybe 15 years. Stokesdale's is way beyond that, so it's time. But right now, we're running on a 2007 adopted map, so a lot's changed since 2007. So, it becomes difficult to give advisement to people based on a 2007 map sometimes. All land use regulations are supposed to be based on the future land use plan, the comprehensive plan. Land use regulations are the plan's implementation tool, and zoning decisions are based on and must reference consistency with this plan or any other officially adopted relevant plan. So, an example would be an access management plan, a thoroughfare and collector plan, which we're going to hopefully have here in a couple of weeks, a traffic study, any of those types of plans that have already been adopted by the governing body. You can reference those and consistency with those. So, your role in adopting or amending the future land use plan, again, this is a legislative process. There's a lot of public involvement in these, lots of public hearings typically. You are the starting point for most processes, aside from staff. So, they might originate it here. Or, the government body might say, "Hey, it's time to update our future land use plan, planning board, let's go, get started, run some public hearings, give us some input on it, and then we'll hold a subsequent public hearing to either adopt it or change it, or whatever might need to be done." You would make recommendations to the town board, town council, on goals, objectives, policies, mapping changes, things like that. You can also make recommendations on any needed areas of special concern or that might require additional study. So, if you know of a wetlands corridor that's in danger of being developed, then you can do like a wetland corridor plan or an environmental protection corridor plan. You know, but all of these plans have to be given authority by the town council, so it kind of trickles down. But you may be aware of things, and so if you are, you can bring those up as part of the public process.
Justin, can you speed this up? We said we'd have a hearing at seven o'clock.
Well, the hearings immediately following the training. I've got three pages left, so I'll do my best. Formulating recommendations through deliberation. So, your considerations are staff recommendations, current land use, adopted plans, adopted maps, availability of utilities. In Stokesdale, it's going to be water, not sewer. Thoroughfare plans, traffic concerns, citizen comments and concerns, noise, traffic, lighting, zoning, and plans for neighboring parcels that you're aware of, and what the board determines makes the most sense for the town that's consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan. So, that's the most important one. That's why it's in bold. So, getting to the vote. So, this is just the basic procedure and outline of a meeting, but the chair is going to take care of everything going down to each item. A quorum is defined as three members of this board, regardless of present members or vacancies. Although normally, the vacancies would be removed from the count, but in Stokesdale, they're not. So, there's some inconsistency with, I think, state statute there, maybe. After the minutes are approved, then old business discussed, acted upon, then the new business is discussed, acted upon. The chair has the right to close the public hearing after both sides have had an allotted amount of time. If you see a big crowd, everybody wants to speak, the chair can establish a reasonable amount of time for both parties, as long as it's equal. So, if there's 200 people in the room, and the chair says, "Well, I'm going to give you a total of 30 minutes," then when 30 minutes is up, he can say, "All right, that's it. You've had your chance. Now, it's your turn to discuss, and then you get 30 minutes," and that's legally permissible. Making motions, always try to phrase them in the affirmative. So, like, I make the motion to approve the denial of this project. I'm not exactly sure why that is, but I think it's easier to defend it, because it's in the affirmative. But, and it's got to do with Robert's Rules of Order, which I'm not all up on. But Chuck's the master. He'll teach you in a whole different course about Robert's Rules of Order. A simple majority vote's going to pass pretty much any motion, with the exception of a variance, which you don't hear. Variance would be a four-fifths majority, as prescribed by state statute. Just keep in mind, wording's got to be clear, concise, and specific. You are allowed to offer substitute motions, amendments to a motion, but it has to be agreed upon by the majority of the board. A motion at a table should always be to a date or meeting-specific, to avoid the need to re-advertise the meeting. Now, if you don't know when the next meeting is, you can say, "I would like to table it to the next meeting that we're holding." I think that's still legally permissible, as long as that meeting is then advertised. You can make a motion to postpone indefinitely, which is really, it just kills it. It's pretty much a dead motion at that point. And then, the chair's going to call for discussion. You make your vote by roll call, aye or nay, or any combination thereof, as long as we can figure out who voted, and as long as it's reflected in the official minutes. And after your vote, the chair's going to thank the applicant, allow a moment for the crowd to leave, if applicable. If there's a contentious vote, this one's important. The chair may need to remind everybody to keep decorum and stay quiet as they leave. And anybody who remains, if they're loud or rowdy, he should call for order. And if there's not order, then a deputy, I've seen a deputy called in to restore order, to remove people from a hearing. So, you know, small town, things can get contentious, but the idea is to always be respectful of one another, and so that's decorum. And they are allowed to appeal any decision, as long as it's per the procedures that are specified in the development ordinance or under state statute. And then, finally, you end up with an adjournment. So, any questions?
Any questions from the board? None being voiced?
And I will say, if you come up with questions, just send them to Robbie, and he'll get them to me, and I'll answer them for you.
All right. Thank you, Justin.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I'd like to have public hearing item number, rezoning case 24-04-PLBB-D-00076. Now, Justin, would you like to present this to the board?
Actually, before we get started, we do have just that one additional agenda item that was added after four.
On a 4A, sorry.
4A.
It's not on your agenda. It was an amendment to the agenda. Sorry about that.
So, we'll get that real quick, and then we'll move on to the public hearing portion. So, as you know, we've just had our training session in order for the members of the board to act in the capacity of board members and sit up there and take a vote. They have to partake in that training. Typically, it was something that was done through a virtual training through the School of Government, but in recent time, that's been done away with. And so, Mr. Snyder was kind enough to come and give a training. So, we do have one new alternate member who has now successfully attended the training, and if you'd like to take your oath of office, I'll be glad to give it to you.
The Washington Post is running a deal right now. I think it's like a quarter for six months.
Oh, really?
Mm-hmm.
I heard the way they're losing like $70 million a year.
Polling. You wouldn't know if you saw the building, your buildings, they've been immense and huge downtown.
I was up here this past weekend, my daughter graduated.
Congrats.
Middle school, NYU or something.
Is it going to? Props, well, actually, because we seem to go back home. Oh, yeah, it's probably delayed, too.
Enforcement officer. All right. So, just for the record, I was able to give Mrs. Mailer her oath of office. She's sworn in as an alternate planning board member. So, that finishes agenda item 4A, so feel free to proceed on to the public hearing.
All right. And Mr. Southern has stated he has a conflicting interest on this. So, I think he will step out now?
Mm-hmm.
And if you would join us?
Thanks, sir.
Is it MEY or MEY? Yeah.
All right. Now, Justin.
So, Mr. Louis already introduced the case number. This is a rezoning request for 7800 Eversfield Road. The request is to go from agricultural to RS forty, single-family residential. Property's located on the east side of Eversfield Road, about one mile north of the intersection with Oak Ridge Road, and the Gulf County Tax Parcel's 150401. And the request is to rezone approximately 45.79 acres of this tract, and the planning board will make a recommendation to the Stokesdale Town Council, which has the final authority to approve or deny the request. I'm going to skip over the descriptions, but I will just note that both the agricultural and RS forty are single-family residential districts. Both have 40,000 square foot minimum lot area requirements. The difference is the agricultural zoning allows agricultural uses and also mobile homes, and does not allow major subdivisions, whereas the RS forty allows major subdivisions, but does not allow most agricultural uses or mobile homes. So, those are your differences between the two. General character of this area, parcel's surrounded by single-family residential and agricultural uses on all sides. The Hall River does provide a natural boundary from the town of Summerfield to the south. Parcel's currently vacant to the north. To the north, the land use is agricultural. To the south, it's single-family residential, separated by the Ha River. To the east is agricultural, and to the west, single-family residential and agricultural uses. There are no historic properties or cemeteries on this property. This would be Stokesdale Fire District, it's approximately two and a half miles from the fire station. They'd be using private septic systems and wells upon any development of this property, whether it be for single-family residential or any other use, it's allowed under the permitted uses in the RS forty.
Justin, can I ask a question?
Sir?
How far away is the water line on Eversfield?
I don't know the answer to that.
We were looking at that earlier. I want to say it goes into the, yeah.
Subdivision.
Which one?
Northwest.
Northwest subdivision. So it's just before you get to that, it's, what's the name of it, Fleetwood Road? So it doesn't quite make its way into the entrance of this. It's just before you get there, it ends a good little distance away. So there's no water access to this as of yet. It doesn't go by it, and it doesn't run into it.
According to our development ordinance, if they develop so many houses within a certain distance from the water line, they will be required to connect up to it.
I know for a fact that's the case with RS thirty.
It's thirty, yeah. RS forty, I don't believe they're required. RS thirty, they're required regardless, as long as they're, I think it's regardless. They changed that ordinance, and I doubt that you have the updated version, because even I didn't have the updated version when I first started planning for Stokesdale, but we're working on that. So if they don't have it, make sure they've got that one, please.
But that does not apply to this request?
No, this is RS forty, so.
Okay.
That's a great question.
That answers the question.
Yeah. Transportation conditions, Eversfield Road's a minor thoroughfare. Per the currently adopted Collector Street and Thoroughfare Plan, I believe it retains that same designation on the proposed thoroughfare and collector plan. There's no improvements proposed as part of this application, it's a straight rezoning. Protected, projected traffic generation, again, we can't make that determination because we don't know the ultimate use of the property, same with school impacts. Topography, it's gently sloping and moderately sloping. There is some regulated one-hundred-year floodplain, and there's also floodway on the southern portion of the property, it's Zone AE by FEMA. There's also mapped wetlands at the south and southeast sections of this property. There are mapped streams on this property, and the property's not within a designated water supply watershed.
Is that the green squiggly line on the map?
Green squiggly line. So that is the, that would be the map stream, the floodway is going to be the Ha River, and then any designated floods, floodplain zone of the Ha River outside of that. So there's multiple streams, and then also that floodway, so there's significant buffering that's going to have to happen. On a map stream, I believe it's fifty feet from the edge of the bank on either side of the stream. With the Ha, it might be more significant, I don't know the rules for the Ha River's And then Stokesdale Land Use Plan does designate this as residential, and that makes up approximately twelve percent, well, in two thousand seven, that was approximately twelve percent of the land area in Stokesdale. And staff's recommending approval of the application, and I've given you a statement of reasonableness and consistency if you'd like to consider those. Staff feels the proposed rezoning action would be reasonable in the public interest because it's an area where single-family residential uses are prevalent, and there'd be no change in the minimum required lot size between the AG or the RS forty zoning districts. Consistency, we feel it's consistent with the Stokesdale Future Land Use Plan designation residential, thus, if approved, a Future Land Use Plan Amendment would not be required. And you have your maps and associated documents. Happy to answer any questions as I may will.
Okay. Any questions from the planning board for Justin? Give everybody a chance to digest that.
Justin, can you speak to, on this map, in the top-left corner, the northwest corner, it's yellow, so it appears to be residential, but the designation is covered up by the AG to RS forty, little white box there at the top.
You're looking at the zoning map?
Yeah.
All right, repeat your question for me.
That top-left corner that's west of Eversfield Road, across the street?
Uh-huh.
It's yellow, so I'm assuming that's residential, but I can't see the others, you can clearly see the designation as RS thirty or RS forty. Is that one zoning section on both sides of the street, so it's all RS thirty? There's, the reason I'm asking is there's an R under there, but I can't see.
If it ends in R, it's probably PDR.
Okay.
Plan Development.
Okay.
Residential.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Yeah, that's an unfortunate spot for that label to get put.
Yeah, it is residential. I've pulled it up here on the GIS. That's correct.
In case I didn't mention it, it is a public hearing, so you can ask to hear from the applicant, and if they've got anything additional to add, we can go through questions as they go.
Any other questions from the board, first of all? All right, I guess we'll do public. Who wants to speak for it? Raise your hand, please, so we get an idea. One, who wants to speak against it? Nobody. So, sir, if you would come up and speak for it, give us your name and address.
Good evening, my name's Brent Severs, I work for FBI Consulting Engineers, our address is eighty-five eighteen Triad Drive, Colfax, and I'm really here just to field any questions you guys may have.
Anybody ain't got questions? I guess, it's got a pretty good package here, then. Thank you for coming. Any comments from the board? Chair will entertain a motion to recommend.
Well, I guess at some point, if you invited anyone in opposition, no one raised their hand, and then there needs to be a motion to close the public hearing if that's before you have a motion to take action.
Chair will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I moved to close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
Mr. Green, seconds. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hearing's closed. Now, take a vote on the recommendation to town. First of all, I need a motion to Town Council, recommend or deny?
Make a motion that we recommend.
And?
Recommend approved.
Why?
Recommend approved.
Correct.
And then, don't forget your consistency and reasonableness statements, please.
Right. So based on, sorry, based on the fact that this application meets with the, is consistent with the other zoning in the area adjacent to and immediate surrounding areas of both agriculture and RS forty, and is consistent with Stokesdale's Future Land Use Plan designation of residential, make a motion that we recommend approval to the board.
Great. Can I get a second?
Second.
Sorry, what's your name?
Andrea.
Ms. Andrea. Seconds it? Let's take a vote. Aye or nay?
I'm aye.
Mr. Green?
Aye.
Mr. Stevenson?
Aye.
I also vote aye. Motion passed. That is a recommendation to the Town Council that they approve this rezoning.
And that hearing will be June thirteenth.
Correct.
And I'm going to put the sign in about fifteen minutes, so if anybody wants to see that sign, you'll be able to.
June thirteenth, seven.
All right, announcements. The next Town of Stokesdale regular Town Council meeting will be held on Thursday, June thirteenth, at seven PM, Town Hall Chambers, right where we are. The next Town of Stokesdale Planning Board meeting will be held on Thursday, June twenty-seventh, at seven PM, inside the Town Hall, where we are today. Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Stevenson makes a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Sit back.
Mr. Green, seconds. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Nay?
None. We are adjourned.
Thanks, everyone.